What is yours?
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. The City of Boston Board of Appeals Hearing from May 23, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, I think you skipped a section. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access the hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Say yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call upon you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Shepherd.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Thank you. Good morning. Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. I will turn it over to Mr. Stembridge.
And good morning to fellow board members also. The first order of business is for the approval of the hearing minutes from April 6th and April 11th of this year.
May I have a motion?
Don't move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next order of business for 9:30 a.m. is for extensions. And at this point, the first on the list is case BOA 1192263. The address being 335 Chelsea Street. For this proposal, the first request for the extension was due to is due to expire on August 20th of this year. If granted, the next, the new expiration date will be August 20th of 2024.
Is Ms. Scatino present?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Laurence Catino with the business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. I'm here seeking an extension for 335 Chelsea Street, a one-year. This board in 2021 granted approval to erect a four-unit residential dwelling. With COVID, there was just a couple of snags, but we do anticipate applying for permits within the next year. And as such, we're just seeking a one-year extension through August of 2024.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'll motion to grant the extension to August 20th, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1159113. The address being 693 Cummins Highway. This is the first request for an extension due to expire on August 6th of this year. If granted, the new expiration date will be August 6th of 2024. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, Vernon Woodward, architect, 9 Elizabeth Street at Mattapan. And this project is also for family to be owner-occupied. Construction documents are complete, but we are unable to have a permit issued without a licensed builder and are having difficulty finding one. So we thought requesting the extension would be appropriate at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'll motion to extend one year to August 6, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1156565. The address being 79 Corbett Street. This is the first request for an extension. The decision is due to expire on June 2nd of this year. If granted, the new expiration date will be June 2nd of 2024. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Mr. De Silva? Give us a raised hand here once you get... Cortina, is that, are you looking? I sent a request. Are you here for this case? Okay, don't succeed on, and I don't know if this person is on. I sent a request and read them. Okay, okay. Shall we move on and circle back?
We will do that.
Let's do that.
Next, we have two companion cases. First being case BOA 1175767. The address being 16 to 22 Linden Street. Companion case to that is BOA 1175793 with the address being 6 Pratt Street. Both are looking for the, are asking for the first request for extension due to expire on August 18th of this year. If granted, the new expiration date will be August 18th of 2024. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joanna Schneider with the business address of 75 State Street. We are here seeking an extension of variances granted by the board in 2021 for the Alston Bean project located at 16 to 22 Linden Street, 6 Pratt Street in Alston. The project entails the construction of 349 residential units, which includes 53 onsite portable units. These decisions were issued by the board in August of 2021, but unfortunately, due to COVID-related impacts on supply chain and labor as well as market conditions, we do not anticipate being able to pull building permit this year. We would therefore respectfully request a one-year extension, which would be until August 18th, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do have a question. The letter that was sent in requesting the extension was just for six months, so I'm just curious about the discrepancy there. You say you're asking for a year.
Sure, I'm happy to address that. I think initially, we were very optimistic that we would only need a six-month extension, but as market conditions continue to be difficult, we think that a year extension would give us the appropriate amount of time.
Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve an extension till August 18, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 898191 with an address of 40 Monkwood Road. This is the third request for an extension, which expires on June 27th of this year. If granted, the new expiration date will be June 27th of 2024. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes. Good morning. Jared Agon, an attorney. Ruben Jenny-Sonrose with an address of 112 Water Street in Boston. There have been previous extensions granted. This is actually the third. The, unfortunately, the property went into foreclosure, and it hasn't closed yet. The lender is still holding it technically, and the closing isn't for another week. But we respectfully ask that it be extended. This is a very, very large project for Brighton. It's 151 units. And there's a host of variances that were granted. I respectfully request that the board allow more time for the new owner to get a contractor and finance a lease.
Any questions from the board?
What's the... I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Yeah, sure. So there's a closing that will happen in a week, and then what's the plan?
Well, I'm not sure. I don't represent the buyer. But no, they intend to proceed with the project. I, as approved.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to grant the extension until June 27, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 773901 with an address of 1465 BSW Parkway. This is the first request for extension, which expires on, which expired on August 9th of 2022. Remains valid until May 27th of 2027 by the board. If granted, the new expiration date will be of 2024.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stembridge. I did not catch the tail end. Someone was speaking.
Basically, this...
How did the extension until when?
Oh, sorry. Until May 27th of 2024.
Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 State Street in Boston, here on behalf of the appellant. This would be the first extension, as Mr. Stembridge had read into the record. The appellant is working with the Department of Transportation to finalize approvals and make final revisions to the project design with regard, there's a curb cut required for the project. And so they're working through a design review for this. It's for a convenience store on a land which was, you know, occupied by a gas station. So the curb cut just needs to be ironed out with the DOT. They're kind of getting there, but they're just not there yet. So they're still working on that final approval, and they need that final approval in order to pull the final building permit. So that's, that's the reason for the delay. And so we're requesting a one-year extension until May 27th of 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cizula. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
A motion to approve the one-year extension to 5/27/24.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1142166. The address of, the address of 15 Leedsville Street. This is the first request for an extension due to expire on August 6th of this year. If granted, the new expiration date will be August 6th of 2024. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Hi, good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Nelson Bamford. I am the owner of 15 Leedsville Street. Today, I'm here to request a one-year extension. This is for two to three occupational change. Currently, the plans have been submitted to the ISD portal. All the work has been complete. The time would allow for a final review and correction.
Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Motion to extend to 8/6/2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 11105060 at the address of 421 to 425 Market Street. This is the first request for extension, which expired on December 23rd of 2022. Excuse me, Madam Chair, but there is no extension date written here. I apologize for that.
It's okay. We'll hear from Mr. Drago.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago, Drago with Descano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Just by way of background, this was an Article 80 project that went through both BPDA and ZBA. It was approved, and sometime during COVID-19, the project sold to a new owner. I represent the new owners. At that time, they were working on design review. Part of that process involved a vertical overhang on the, so some design changes on the exterior that had to go through a whole process through both BPDA and PIC. That took the better of 10 months to finally get all the legal documents approved. At that time, when they submitted their final building plans, because everything is completed on the project, everything was submitted to Plans Examiner, Tom White. When he reviewed, upon review, he realized that the time had already expired under the approval. So we are seeking an extension from the time that it expired in December 23rd of 2022, I believe. We have everything submitted, so it's, we put down a year because we are already into this for five or six months, but everything is waiting in ISD. They're just not able to review this until or if an extension would be granted. So we would, we would ask the board for those reasons to please extend that.
Thank you, Mr. Drago. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend to December 23, 2024. Is that enough time?
Yes, Ms. Panado, everything is submitted, so we're hoping within a few months this could be approved.
Great.
I'm sorry. It sounds like you want a one-year until December 23rd of 2023 from 23, from the 23rd of 2023.
Correct. Yes, that's right. I'm sorry. That would be, yeah, I'm sorry, mistake. And you're right, Ms. Panado. Yeah, from one year would have been, our request would have been to December of 2023.
Yes. What did I say? I thought I said the same.
And I interpret, yeah.
That's fine. You're fine. Is 2023 sufficient, December 2023?
Yes.
Okay. If, in that case, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge. Did I lose Mr. Stembridge?
No, I was just on mute.
Yes, now that I'm on mute.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
At this point, we can, we'll make a call again for case BOA 1156565 with the address of 79 Corbett Street, which had, which was looking for a first request for extension due to, which, which will expire on June 2nd of this year. If granted, the new expiration date will be June 2nd of 2024. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Hi, Vincent. Cortina, is that you?
Yes, this is me.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
No, I don't have a question. My, 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 my hand keeps, it keeps raising on its own. I don't do anything.
Sir, are you presenting for 79 Corbett Street?
I don't think he is.
Okay, so is Mr. De Silva on? All right.
I'm saying.
If not, can I have a, a motion to Samantha deny without prejudice?
You, you can, Madam Chair.
Or?
We could put this on, we could defer it and put it on a different date, or we could D-WALL.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a motion to defer to, sounds fine.
I heard a second. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Okay, next, we will move on to the groundwater pond conservation overlay district only at, at 9, scheduled for 9:30. First, we have is case BOA 1461987 with an address of 43 Cooper Street. And been notified that this appeal has been withdrawn. Is there anyone to speak to that, or is that, that what we'll do? It's just withdraw that. With that, then we will just withdraw and move on.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to start the motion?
Do I make, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion that this, this case be withdrawn?
Second.
A second? Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1456872 with the address of 64 North Margin Street. Is the applicant or anyone here to represent us?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, good morning. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802 in Boston. With me today is Tom Maguloski from 64 North Margin LLC, who is the appellant on this. I believe, Madam Chair, I know that Mr. Simonelli is, I believe, on vacation this week, but did relay support to the board. Okay, the no-harm letter was submitted from McPhail Associates back in April, as was a Boston Water and Sewer approval letter from April as well to the board. Both of those are the kind of typical, even documents for the board for G-Cod. So this is a fully compliant project otherwise to renovate this existing structure of the site. Happy to answer any questions, but I think the usual documents are in order, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we'll go into the hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. At this time, we'll ask if there are any withdrawals or deferrals that would be requested for any of these.
Yes, this is Marco Lee for, presenting about 240 Silver Street. I'm seeking a deferral in order to continue to working with my neighbor that owns the properties on either side of my property.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Madam Chair, do we, sorry. Do we want to read that into the record, the BOA number, Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Stembridge. Do I have to revote everyone, or can I just finish the vote and have him do that?
We, we'll just read it into the record, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And that, and this is case BOA 1264670 with the address of 240 Silver Street.
Okay, I think I had one more person voting. Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Okay, the chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
And that will be, Madam Chair, forgive me, that will be for July 11th, date of July 11th.
Thank you.
If there are no more, any, we'll move on. Any, move on?
Any more complaints? I think there was another person on, unless we got them. Could have helped you all set, sorry about that, thank you.
Okay. Then we will move on to case BOA one-four-four-six-five-eight-zero with the address being one-oh-nine Babson Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Present.
Can you put your name and address into the record and let us know what your application?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sean Halcy, the designer representing the Depina family for one-oh-nine Babson Street. We are proposing to add a shed dormer to the existing two-family residence. By doing that, that would increase the square footage of the third floor to over fifty percent of the square footage of the second floor. By a marginal, it would increase the square footage to sixty-two percent of the second floor. By doing this shed dormer that allow the Depina family to raise their family and to continue living in this residence, we are not going up higher than the existing ridgeline. We're not going up, we're not extending the existing footprint of the building at all. It is strictly the classification of the third floor that we are seeking forgiveness upon. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this design or the application.
Any questions from the board?
Drawings are adequate.
Thank you. May I, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, our office held a Butters meeting on April twelfth of two thousand and twenty-three. As I understand, there were no concerns presented there. They went on to meet with the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, which offered their support, citing that the applicant would be maintaining the existing gable ridge and framing of the roof, and their expanding of the dormer on a sloped roof, they felt was, was rather minor. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Newman. May I have no raised hands?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Council General Resident Support.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-four-seven-eight-nine-eight. The address is sixty-eight H Chickatoput Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, sir. My name is James Christopher of six-eight-six Architects with the business address of eleven-fifty-six Dorchester Ave, here today on behalf of Jackie and Chris Spencer, the homeowners.
Can you walk us through the proposal?
Good evening, good morning. Yes, the, the, the plan is to construct a rear and side addition to the existing single-family home. It's currently an undersized lot, the, the minimum lot requirement in this district is five thousand square feet. We would be at three thousand seven hundred and ten square feet. The, the addition happens primarily in the rear and consists of a full basement, which would be a recreational music room for the homeowner, and then a renovated first floor, pantry and access to the side yard. And on the second floor, just reorganization of the existing bedrooms to create a master bedroom, a small office, and then two additional bedrooms. And then a farmer's porch to the front of the property. We met with the Butters, the project was well received, the project was reviewed by Cedar Grove Civic Association and met with support.
Any questions from the board?
Can you just walk us through the violations, the rear yard, side yard?
Sure, yep, the, the minimum lot size again is required to be five thousand square feet. We are at three thousand seven hundred and ten square feet. The FAR is point five, will be at point seven four, with a total square footage of two thousand seven hundred and forty-nine square feet. The allowable building height is thirty-five feet, we meet that, we meet the stories. Front yard is required to be fifteen, we're at six-point-four, the, that's existing, pre-existing nonperformance, there's no change to that, except that we do add a farmer's porch. The left and right existing are twenty feet and seventeen feet. It's required to be ten, and when we're done, the left will need relief at four-point-nine feet, the right will be compliant at seventeen foot seven. And then the rear yard is required to be twenty feet and will be from, the, the minimum will be twelve foot in the rear.
Any other questions, Ms. Panado?
No, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, background information on the community process, our office hosted a meeting where four Butters indicated their support verbally. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. As you heard from the applicant's representation, they also connected with the Cedar Grove Civic, who did not have any concerns either. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council Frank Baker's office, we'd like to go in strong support of this project today. The neighborhood is all behind these wonderful neighbors, and we give them our support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Council General Resident Support.
And, Madam Chair, members of the board, Kian Seabusman from Council Mary's office. The applicant completed their community process, now support other Butters and the Cedar Grove Civic Association. The council sent over a letter of support, but would also like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have no raised hands? Thank you, with that, may I have a motion?
All three of your motions were approved with BPDA desire.
May I have a second? Oh, thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next case is BOA one-four-six-one-one-seven-two with the, with the address being three-sixty-two East Eighth Street. Is the applicant or, and/or their representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Anthony Monahan, the applicant, three-sixty-two East Eighth Street, South Boston. I'm here to request a, where applied for a roof deck to the existing single-family home. We're doing a full renovation to the existing building, part of, in the roof deck, violation of setbacks, because it's hurt on that party wall. This is a single-family home with an attached single-family identical right next to us. The building right next to us has a roof deck, beautiful views of Carson Beach. We'd like to do something very similar to ours. We currently have, you know, beautiful neighborhood, nice single-family home with very little outdoor space, just a small balcony off the primary bedroom. So we'd like to be able to have some outdoor space to put some chairs and enjoy the outside of the summer.
Any questions from the board?
Drawings are adequate.
Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted a Butters meeting for three-sixty-two East Eighth Street on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have received two letters of opposition from the Butters. They oppose the project due to concerns regarding parties and the overall quality of life in the neighborhood. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from neighbors and the Butters to the project. Moreover, Council President Flynn and the South Boston elected officials have received feedback from neighbors and civic groups for years concerned about additional roof deck proposals in the neighborhood due to their impact on quality of life with documentation often sent to our offices of loud parties, adult hours, and trash removal issues that often was up in the streets and in the sidewalks. Throughout the neighborhood, our seniors person with disabilities, young families have all said that this behavior was exacerbated during the pandemic. Council President Flynn and Council Flaherty will respond to calls throughout the summer with Boston Police Six-Six Community Officers to visit problem properties causing the disturbances at all hours from their roof decks. It got to the point of raising the issue of escalating fines at the municipal level for offenses. For several years, the zoning board has been receptive to these concerns from the neighborhood. We respectfully ask that the board continue to take the concerns of neighbors and civic groups seriously when it comes to additional roof deck proposals that are already impacting neighbors' quality of life. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Acknowledging the submitted to Council President Flynn's office as well as the Butters feedback, as well as the violations under Article sixty-eight, Council General Resident Opposition.
Yeah. Dan, are you looking at your testimony here?
Oh, hey, good, good morning, and my name is Dan. I, I, I live next door to three-sixty-two East Eighth. Did not attend the Butters meeting, but just was curious, Anthony, you mentioned the proposal had the, I think, the, the roof deck kind of buttoning up against our wall. What, what kind of construction for the roof would, would be used?
Sorry, are you speaking in support or opposition? This is not a forum to answer, like, all these.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I didn't realize, I, I was.
Come now, there's no raised hands. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Is this a rental property or homeownership?
This will be for homeownership.
Is it currently homeownership?
Currently, right, right now, it's under construction, it's a full, full renovation right now, but it will be for homeownership, yes, it's.
It's, it's a condominium project?
No, it's just a single-family with parking, so it'll just be, it'll be one family in there, most likely, three-bedroom, single-family.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'm going to motion to approve, just, you know, the, I'm just looking at the front of the building too, there's already a roof deck there, so I don't think it's gonna make any addition, additional issues up there. I'll motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Next, excuse me, next we have case BOA one-four-four-three-six-two-three with the address of six-oh-five East Fifth Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Hi, I'm the applicant, Elizabeth Wagner.
Can you put your address into the record and just briefly walk us through the proposal and violations?
Yeah, good morning, everyone, thanks. My address is six-oh-five East Fifth Street, South Boston. Proposal is a one-story addition in the rear yard, and the violation is the three-foot setback from the side yard. So we, I'm the homeowner here, and it's the first story of a three-story townhouse in Boston. We currently have one bedroom on that level and are proposing a one-story addition towards the rear for an additional bedroom space for guests and office space. And there's a patio, a kind of brick pavers laid out right now, that we also wish to build, you know, a deck, a floor-level deck on, extending out, and that's where the violation, I believe, is occurring on the, on the one property line there. Yep, all in the rear. Of the home.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Oh, drawings are adequate.
Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an Butters meeting for six-oh-five East Fifth Street on April tenth, one Butter was in attendance. The proponent answered all questions, we're unaware of any concerns about this project. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and no concerns raised at the Butters meeting or to our office thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Acknowledging the community of the way into drafting Article sixty-eight, there are projects that do have merit, and this being one of them, the council, the council has heard of no opposition, councilor therefore would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands for this proposal. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
The next, the next, excuse me, the next case earlier, was deferred earlier, so going on to the next one, we, is, that case will be BOA one-four-four-two-five-six-one with the, the address of one-oh-four Canal Street. This is an Article eighty case. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Jared Eigerman again. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ruben Junius in Rose, one-twelve Water Street. With me is architect BK Boley of Stantec, and Vincent Cortina for the developer Somnath Hospitality. BK is going to present the project, I just want to give you some history. The project actually came before this board years ago for zoning relief in two thousand and fifteen. Didn't proceed, got caught up in the COVID pandemic. The previous attorney, Bruce Silman, actually passed away way too young, a couple of years ago, after getting several extensions. So this is a do-over. We, we did not ask for another extension, went through small project review again last year, and we're back for relief for G-Cod, FAR height, and loading. Just on the loading, DPW and BTD is very interested in pedestrianizing Canal Street as it leads into the Boston Garden, and so the, there is no off-street loading, it will be handled on the side street. BK will take you through the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I apologize, my video is not loading, so I will have to be incognito for this presentation. I am a design principal at Stantec Architecture located at forty Water Street in downtown Boston. As you can see here on this image, the location of the project is at the center of Canal Street in the Bull Finch Triangle. You can go to the next slide, please. It is going to take the place of a one-story building that has been there for many years. It's kind of a missing tooth along Canal Street. It's a little Bank of America building, and you can see views up and down Canal Street. Next. This shows our building in blue, and it's, we're asking for a building height of one-hundred and forty-nine feet, which we think is commensurate with some of the other buildings in the immediate neighborhood, and we think will fit very nicely into the, the slot that it sits in along Canal Street and Valencia Way. Next. The footprint is quite small, it's only thirty-six hundred square feet, and if you go to the next plan, you can see on the ground floor, we have a lobby, we have loading in the back of the building, if you go to the next slide. And then we have an entrance off of Canal Street. The city is. The city is considering tabling Canal Street as a pedestrian way from Valente down to Causeway. So we've been working with them most recently to make sure that where our entrance is, which is being adjusted and everything, and the sidewalks all work with their future plans. We have moved the transformer vault for resiliency reasons to the second and third floor. It's a two-story space. We have a very small hospitality room on the second floor with two beds. And then if you go to the next slide, it gives you a sense of the typical floor that has eight keys per floor, two elevators, and two stair cores. You can go to one more. This is the top of the building, and what we've tried to do is to bury most of the mechanical equipment inside the roof line of the building so that doesn't affect the neighborhood views. And I believe in the next few slides, we're showing you some of the elevations that were in the set that you have. It's a brick building, and it has a very nice cornice at the top of the building, and you can see that the mechanical penthouse is sitting below that cornice on the top of the building. It has a very nice base middle top with quite a bit of detail. We have a few rendered views that show you it in context. This is the building. It's 15 stories tall. It's 98 keys is what we are asking for. There's really no material change from the original permit, except for the new, complying with the new energy code, et cetera. The next view shows you a view from Canal Street, looking back at how it fits into the rhythm of the masonry buildings along Canal Street. The next view shows the front entrance of the project, and then the second story, which has the hospitality room. And then these final show you the level of detail that we're thinking about for the masonry in the-- One more. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Is this a hotel flag or private-owned hotel?
We've worked with a number of flags before COVID, and so what we're doing is we're reaching out to flags moving forward. It may be a boutique hotel or a boutique part of a larger brand.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, food chair?
Yes.
What's the timeline for construction for this project? And also, have you selected a general contractor for this project yet?
We have not selected a general contractor yet. We were working with one previous to COVID who had done the initial estimating for us. We are considering that the building is going to be CLT, which is new mass timber structure that can go up to 15 stories. So we're investigating that with a number of different contractors and subcontractors. And we expect to do drawings and finalized drawings by the end of this coming up year. Construction may start as soon as next spring, if not the following fall.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, we have public testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Sierra D'Amico from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant did have an ongoing community process, as stated. Back in 2014, they did meet with the West End Civic Association, where the committee did not oppose for their zoning and planning committee. Then when they were ready to restart the project and had some changes, they did go back to the BPDA's small project review, and they did meet with the West End Civic Group again back in October 2022. They did not require a letter from that group, but they did submit some comments to the BPDA, and they didn't have any opposition again. But at this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and feedback from the neighbors and civic organizations. He provided a support letter to the board this morning, as he did with the BPDA board previously. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the proponent work closely with the community on any quality of life issues that may arise during the construction phase. He also urged the team to work closely with the West End Museum to preserve the historical elements from the original bank building. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Council General Record Support.
Bob, are you going to give testimony here?
I'm sorry, I was, I was on a meeting. Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. I was wondering if the applicant can show me how the loading and unloading is going to take place on Valente Way.
Hi, if you go back to the plan, you can see that it's a street loading. On the side of Valente Way, there is a trash room as well as access to the laundry room, which is down below. Most of the laundry work is going to be happening on the site in the basement, where we have a small fitness center and a laundry area. If you go to the ground floor plan, which is a few more-- One more after that, I think, shows the ground floor. So you can see two doors on the left. One is the egress stair, and one is the trash room that is located just beyond the luggage room and the SCC room.
Okay, Madam Chair, let's make, I'd like to make a suggestion. Since it's very, very tight on Valente Way, I would like to limit the size of the delivery vehicles to what they call an SU-30. A tractor trailer would have a very difficult time leading access and egress to the site. So I'd like to limit the size of the truck to what they call an SU-30. Thank you.
Thank you. Would that be an issue?
We think that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. IC BPDA hand raised?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Erin Skivins, and I'm a project assistant at the BPDA. As mentioned, this project was previously approved by the BPDA Board in October of 2014, and the proponents filed a small project change with the BPDA on September 23rd, 2022. A public meeting was held via Zoom on October 20th, 2022, which was advertised in the local newspaper and online, and our board approved the small project change on November 17th. The project has the agency's support and received support from several members of the community during the Article 80 review process. Thank you.
May I?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Robert, representing the Carver Marine Union. On behalf of all our Boston residents, we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. No additional questions? Okay, any additional questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to ask the proponent. I was just reviewing the BPDA memo, and since this is a, this is a commercial building, there is no affordable housing. Also, the project is less than 100,000 square feet, so I don't think the project is making a contribution to a linkage fund. So I would like to ask the proponent if you can tell us more about what are the community benefits that this project is a bringing to the community.
Jared, I'd like that to be you or me?
All right, I'll start. Well, the community benefits include synergy with North Station and the Boston Garden. Although there was a hiccup, of course, with COVID and the hospitality industry took a big hit in working with the community and with the BPDA, this seems to be the right use. And it's a very small site, so it cannot support DIP payments, as you referenced. It's actually not even 50,000 square feet. It's something on the order of 47,000. But I do think it's going to help, not just I think, the BPDA Board also thought it would help enliven Canal Street, especially if it does get tabled to have a tourist hotel at this location.
Okay, thank you. I would just add, I would just add that the community and the BPDA were really in favor of filling in this, this urban hole that exists. So there's going to be new activity on the ground floor plan. It's going to be well-lit and safe at a corner, but it's only really lit on the opposite side right now with the other new building that went up. There's obviously going to be sidewalk improvements, new jobs, construction jobs as well. So that's, in addition to doing a very green building, we really think that this is going to lend a lot to the character of Canal Street at this intersection.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate the jobs and the, the public space, the, and I like the building in general. I was just curious about the contributions to, to the city or the benefits, because usually big projects bring other benefits, like contributions to public projects, et cetera. So I was just curious to, to see if there was anything else that was not on the memo.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I just, this is David, I do have one quick question. Just, and maybe this is just part of the motion, but I'm just curious. I know Bob had, Bob D'Amico had this question about the limiting of trucks, and I'm just not sure if that's intended to be requested as a proviso or just something that's documented.
That should be a proviso if that's something that we would like to incorporate into the motion.
Okay.
Are you making a motion?
I, I'm happy to do so then, now too.
Feel free.
A motion to approve with a proviso of limiting to SU-30 trucks. And not sure if, I don't believe this needs, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Great, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1329391 with the address being 300 to 399 Fanyual Hall Marketplace. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the, my name is Eric Lawrence, CEO of Soul Cannabis. Today, we're here seeking zoning relief to open an adult-use cannabis dispensary in Fanyual Hall Marketplace. Soul Cannabis is a majority-minority-owned economic empowerment and social equity applicant that's been certified by the City of Boston. Our site is located at 340 North Market Street. It is the old Durgin Park Restaurant location. The site's been dormant for over five years. We're eager and prepared to make the necessary investment to renovate and activate this historic site. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. We have a seven-member ownership team, local seasoned business professionals with experience that spans many industries, including the operation of existing doors-open dispensaries. Next slide, please. Our mission is to create an immersive, cultural, music-themed retail dispensary that supports the cultural arts. Site will have a state-of-the-art recording studio, which will serve as the anchor to our community impact plan. Next slide, please. Our location is commercially zoned with no direct residential abutters. There are other dispensaries within our half-mile buffer, but we feel strongly that the downtown area can support multiple dispensaries because our buffer zone, within our buffer zone, there are nine different densely populated neighborhoods. Fanyual Hall Marketplace is its own ecosystem, seeing 20 million visitors a year as the seventh most visited site in the country. Now I'm going to turn it over to my partner, Todd Fernard, who's going to talk a little bit more about the location.
Mr.--
Thank you, Eric.
Eric Lawrence, whoever's presenting next, can you just include, let us know what are those other locations within the buffer zone and like wherever they?
Sure. So Eric, I appreciate it, Madam Chair, thank you. We utilize Pacer AI technology to track where visitors to Fanyual Hall are coming from and where they are going to. In summary, we see here on, actually, the next slide, great, right there. We see that the people who are coming to Fanyual Hall Marketplace are not visiting North Station or the Financial District or any of the other nine neighborhoods located within the half-mile. They're coming to Fanyual Hall, and they're going home primarily or back to their hotel. But the data clearly shows that less than 1% of these visitors are going to, going near any of the other dispensaries that are located outside of Fanyual Hall. And Madam Chair, we will return, I'll, we'll come back to the slide and point out the other dispensaries within the, within the zone, but they're all outside of Fanyual Hall. On the next slide, we actually see more interesting data. New Frontier tracks 164 billion active cannabis users. Their data shows that, that there are more cannabis consumers standing in front of Durgin Park than even visited any of the other open dispensaries during the time being calculated. Over 24,000 cannabis users stood in front of Durgin Park. These potential customers are not walking down to Ascend in front of the garden or even into the Financial District to find a dispensary. The data shows us that they just won't make that half-mile walk. More to the point, and on the next slide, we can see that the Fanyual Hall Marketplace is asking for a cannabis retail experience inside of the bustling space. Just to the next slide, if you don't mind. Thank you. Here, you'll see a letter from George Maherekas, who is the president of the Fanyual Hall Merchants Association. In summary, George and the Merchants Association show their, express their opinion, and it's clear, an overwhelming majority of the merchants would like to see us open Soul Cannabis within Fanyual Hall. And merchants that support our, merchants also support our belief that cannabis dispensaries outside of Fanyual Hall are not driving foot traffic to Fanyual Hall. Lastly, the resurgence of this important foot traffic is critically important to the success of the marketplace, and our unique entertainment-focused concept is exactly what George and the overwhelming majority of the merchants want to see in Fanyual Hall. We share the letter because it's an important piece of information. The business community is fully supportive of our application. From the Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, we know that applicants are granted cannabis license within a half-mile buffer zone if the applicant can provide sufficient information that demonstrates the site will have no detrimental impact on the existing residential and business community. This was the conclusion that the BCB unanimously reached in our last meeting. Opening Soul Cannabis in the middle of Fanyual Hall will have zero detrimental impact on the residential community, as Fanyual Hall is somewhat isolated from any of the residential communities around, and the business community has shown overwhelming support. During our approval process with the Boston Cannabis Board, a market study was commissioned by the City of Boston designed to study whether local cannabis, whether the local cannabis market had reached saturation. We believe that the takeaway from the Fitzgerald report was that we're clearly a long way away from the market being saturated. Dr. Fitzgerald's report integrated research from Whitney Economics and information provided by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission. The Mass CCC determined that a possible saturation point for the state could be at a point between 627 and 921 retail outlets. Well, only 271 dispensaries are open thus far. Massachusetts, the City of Boston, and most specifically Fanyual Hall Marketplace are not saturated at this point in time. I'll hand things now back over to Eric Lawrence.
Thank you, Todd. Yes, can we just go back to slide number six so that we can answer the question, the chair regarding what other locations? Yes, as you can see in this diagram here, there is Ascend, which is at North Station within our buffer. There's Apex Noir, which is listed as verdant here, that is in the Financial District. Roster Roots is in the Financial District. Pure Oasis is in Downtown Crossing, and then there's Patriot Care as well in our, currently in our buffer zone. Roster Roots is not currently open. I'm not sure when they will be opening, but those currently are the other dispensaries that are within our buffer. Now we can, if you don't have any questions, Madam Chair, we'll continue on to our site location on page 11.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of points to make on our site. Our site is six floors and approximately 15,000 square feet. It offers ample space to queue customers inside the facility, preventing the need to have lines forming outside the building. Our main floor, our main sales floors will be located on the first and second floor, and our studio operations will be located on the top sixth floor. Next slide, please. We will hire a diverse workforce, and we'll train and prepare them for upward mobility within the cannabis industry. We've committed to source 20% of our products from social equity companies. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Whenever possible, we want to provide employment to individuals that have been penalized under cannabis prohibition. We'll offer preference, hiring preference to Boston residents. Starting salaries will range between twenty and twenty-two dollars an hour and will offer performance increases at three, six, and twelve months. We'll offer a full benefits package. Next page, next slide, please. We plan to allocate two hundred thousand dollars a year in free recording time to aspiring artists from disproportionately impacted areas. The director of music and business, Michael Bivens, will rely on his four years of experience in the music industry to mentor and assist aspiring artists navigating the music industry. We'll work with the Fanyo Hall Marketplace management team to set up a soundstage twice a year and have local artists join celebrity artists on stage to hone their performing skills. Next slide, please. The C C C has established strict security regulations and guidelines. We'll comply with the stage guidelines to ensure that we are offering safe, secure access to cannabis products. We've contracted with an outside security company to provide in-house security. We will coordinate with the Fanyo Hall Marketplace security to ensure that our customers are complying with our nuisance prevention policies. Next slide, please. Our goal is to be a good neighbor and to be a positive addition to the Fanyo Hall Marketplace business community. Also, cannabis customers will be required to comply with our nuisance prevention policy of no public consumption, no laundering, no littering, or any unlawful behavior. In closing, I'd like to say that our business plan is very much in line with Mayor Wu's plan to transform downtown Boston, reimagine Fanyo Hall Marketplace, activate closed storefronts, and to create preserved spaces that support the cultural arts in Boston. To conclude our presentation, we would like to open it up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can you talk about the windows, given the restrictions and the fact this is an important tourist attraction and pedestrian experience?
Windows relating to them like being covered?
Yeah, are you doing anything to make them a little better pedestrian experience than just black windows?
Yeah, yeah, well, we want to make the location very welcoming. If you go back to slide number eleven and you look at our floor plan, we actually will have a queuing area, which will be a lobby area where no cannabis products will be visible. So we'd like to have those windows open so we can have a more inviting experience. You know, we plan to collaborate with a lot of the local vendors to sell different wares so that space could be used for multiple purposes outside of the sale of cannabis product.
So what's the pedestrian experience going to feel like?
Well, you know, again, we want it to be welcoming for people to come in. Be able to experience, again, securing safe access to cannabis product. And it will have, again, our music theme will be, you know, throughout the whole facility. So we'll, you know, people will have an opportunity to potentially stream, will be able to stream from our recording studio down into our sales floor, potentially recording artists that are, that are recording, utilizing the studio facility. Customers will be able to experience that.
So pedestrians will experience that?
Not pedestrians, if they're within the facility, yes.
Yeah, no, but my question is sort of if you're not entering the facility, you're just walking by.
Right.
What does that experience feel like, given that you have to have, you know, dark windows and?
Well, yeah, some of the, some of the regulations have changed around the windows, providing that you're not viewing a cannabis transaction or any cannabis products. You are, you are allowed to have your windows open into like your vested view security check-in area.
Okay.
Yes.
So it won't be just black. And then, and then do you have to be in the cannabis establishment to access the studios? This is like a music performing recording studio or are they separate, the two, the two facilities?
It's one facility. The studio can be accessed through an elevator, a limited access elevator. Only people who have pre-arranged appointments to the facility will be allowed to go up to the actual recording studio.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And so just to clarify, is this a walk-in, like a walk-in facility? Do people order in advance and only those enter, those folks enter? Like, how do you avoid queuing up or crowds or et cetera?
Yeah, well, we will have both. We'll have an express. If you look at the facility there, there is an express counter. Once you enter into the actual dispensary area, there's an express pickup. So people will be able to preorder online. That will limit a lot of the waiting. And today, you know, because of the, all the different dispensaries that are open, you're really not seeing lines. Because we are going to be a destination location and, and, you know, billing ourselves as an attraction, we do anticipate to have good foot traffic and plenty of customers. But each floor approximately twelve hundred square feet, excuse me, about twenty-five hundred square feet comprising a total fifteen thousand. Half of that space on our first floor is going to be dedicated to our entrance lobby check-in area. So we should be able to fit easily one hundred and fifty people into that, that side of the facility without them being outside the facility and having lines form.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I, may I open up the public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Sarah D'Amico from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our applicant did complete a community process. And on behalf of our office, we held a community meeting August fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, where abutting businesses did voice some concerns of just the location overall and having a business nearby as well. They also did present to the Wolf District Council, where they did receive a letter of opposition. But at this time, our office would like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The council would like to go and record his support, again, as he did previously at the Cannabis Board. He sent an alert this morning to the board as well. His support comes from a good community process. The applicant's commitment to community through mentorship opportunities. And that is a majority-minority-owned business and certified Boston Equity Cannabis applicant. At this time, when we're trying to bring economic activity back to the downtown area, Council President Flynn believes it is also critical to activate a long-baited site with jobs and opportunities, bringing foot traffic to Fanyo Hall and to neighboring businesses as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a few raised hands. I'll start over here. Can you state your name and address for the record? Let us know if you support opposition.
Hey, I'm Raheem Muhammad and I reside out of fifty Linwood Street, Boston, Mass. And I'm in full support of Soul Cannabis. So good morning, Chair.
Thank you. Jessica, can we focus on abutters, please? We're not sure who's. I know, I know. Yep, that wasn't a butter, but. Yeah, Tito? For those who, for those online. Thank you.
Madam Chair, as well as the board, my name is Tito Jackson. I reside at thirty-seven Skyler Street in Dorchester, but my business is at one fifty State Street. And I just want to note that we do need to put in perspective that typically in cannabis, when they come before you, that's a straight conditional use asked. This is obviously a variance, which actually has a higher bar. And I would note, one, one thing I do want to correct the record, that there was one additional cannabis location that was missed. There's a cannabis, Rasta Roots, Pure Oasis, Ascend, Apex Noir. And then there's another one that has, it's on High Street, which is called Primitive. So currently, there are six of these businesses that are zoned in this area. This board put in place a buffer zone to not create what they have in Denver, which is a green mile. Essentially, what is being created here is a green half a mile. And so I believe it is incumbent upon the board to step in. I, as a business owner, have not come to you for all of the others. I am coming to you for this, one, taking into account several factors. One of the factors is the traffic, as noted, and many, and widely reported, many of the large buildings downtown are only about thirty percent full. In addition, the proximity that was noted is actually somewhat misstated. This business is actually about five hundred feet from our current business. And Rasta Roots is actually only two hundred feet from our current, our current business. We are all in this area to be in the Fanyo Hall area. This, this argument that Fanyo Hall is in some way a very different economic bubble, that is absolutely not the case. And frankly, I wouldn't be paying the rent that I pay to not be in, in Fanyo Hall. This is.
Please wrap up. Are you in favor or in opposition?
Madam Chair, I'm strongly in opposition. And I would ask that the board actually put the brakes on having black-owned businesses compete with each other in ways that other organizations don't have to compete. Out of those six, four of them are already black-owned businesses. And this would be a fifth. And I think if we're talking about access, we actually need to split that conversation to success and make sure that the businesses that are currently here, as well as our employees, have an opportunity to grow and flourish.
Thank you.
I'm probably in opposition.
Thank you. Susan?
Hi, can you hand me? This is Susan Lawango. I am a forty-three-year merchant at Fanyo Hall Marketplace. I am in favor of this project. We, we have had a lot of empty space here. We continue to have that. Soul Cannabis is the only vendor that has come to us willing to invest one million dollars into this project. We've had no one else approach us. We are strongly in favor of this project because we need to revitalize the marketplace. Thank you.
Are you related to Peter? I see his hand is raised as well. If he has the same sentiments, okay, then you can lower his hand. James Finney?
Hi, my name is James Finney. I live in the Southend area. I am in favor of this location and it opens up opportunity for entertainers. And I believe that Eric and Michael Bivens will do a great job offering people other opportunities besides cannabis. And Eric worked very hard. Thank you.
Do you want me to keep going, Madam Chair? Okay, let's try two, two of them more. Okay. Darrell? I think we get the idea.
Hello, my name is Darrell Weathers. I'm a resident actually in Beacon Hill, two fifty Cambridge Street, and I'm also a business owner in Boston. Scope HQ, I'm in full support of Soul Cannabis. There's many layers, but it's absolutely amazing to uprising uplift for black dispensary in Fanyo Hall where there was slave trade health and I think monetizing off our gifts is something that it brings. And eight dollars per black household, it was crazy here. So I think a black.
Okay, Perry? One more, yeah. Okay, Perry?
Yes, hi, my name is Perry Dyer. I own Cyber Sound Recording Studios here in the Back Bay, three four nine Newbury Street. I fully support Soul Cannabis and personally be running the recording studio.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I think, I think we get the idea. Any other questions from the board? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve with B P D A design review. Just on the exterior of that building, it's, you know, it's marked historic. So preserving the exterior is relatively important.
May I have a second? Second. Okay, Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we are approaching the eleven o'clock hour, with those hearings scheduled in. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Hey.
Then at this time, we will move on to the eleven o'clock hearing.
Would you want to take a five-minute break, Madam Chair?
I guess since we should be waiting till eleven, is that right?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, sure, five-minute break. Bye, oh, break it is. Bye.